At this time, we'll invite any that wish to join council as we stand for our invocation. And ask that freshman member of council deliver the invocation and if y'all will pause after that because the Girl Scouts are gonna help us with the pledge of allegiance, right? Do y'all wanna come up here and help us with that? Alright, we're gonna do that right next, so I'll tell you when, okay? Alright, go ahead.
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for bringing us together this afternoon. Thank you for all the blessings you have bestowed upon us. Help us as we gather together to do the business of the city to have in mind always what is good, what is true, what is right, what is loving, what is kind, and just what is the best for this city. Help us to make decisions that are wise, not just for today, but for the future. Thank you for all the people who have chosen to participate, the mayor, the manager, the council, all the citizens here in the city. Help us to work in the spirit of cooperation and do all we can for our city. And thank you again for all your blessings, in Jesus' name.
Alright, girls, you ready? Whenever you're ready. Okay, three in the PC. At this time, the chair will approve, motion to wave, and wave of reading and approve the minutes of March 12, 2019, regular city council meeting. Any discussion here in all favor signify by saying aye. Moving into presentations, Madam Manager, you have a guest here this evening, our one, Mr. Charles Bearneau.
Yes.
Would you like to know, would you like to know what his license tag was in college? Or maybe his favorite meal?
Oh my goodness, I don't know.
So Charlie Bearneau was an older brother to me in a fraternity many, many years ago. I've learned a lot of things about him. One of the things that I learned is he's actually pretty standard of guys. Charlie, glad to have you in Hartsville. So he is now our field services rep, and there used to be three and now there's two.
Yeah.
You've replaced Bill Taylor.
That's right.
Who we never thought could be replaced.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor members of council. I'm just here to say hello from the association. Charlie Bearneau, the new field services manager. I was the city manager in Greenwood, hired at this. So excited about working with you and serving the association.
Charlie got Greenwood at Publix.
I did?
Yeah. We're gonna talk to Charlie after, after the meeting a little bit. It's great to have you back. Good to see you haven't changed since college. That was probably a lie. You look good, good to see you. Alright, next, we have proclamations. Wow, I just thought I'd point out you haven't changed since college. I went to PC. Yes, Bob's kids went to, uh, went to PC. And he knows the lady at the, I mean, at the, uh, the huddle house that asked, the only person she knows is me because I ate there every day for an entire semester because I got that federal aid tuition check back. And back in those days, you go to the person's office and sign for it, it wouldn't send it to your parents. They made you come in. I thought I got a refund for dropping a couple of classes. Six weeks later, I am standing through my checkbook, big tipping at the, the huddle, the huddle house or the wattlehouse?
Wattle.
Wattlehouse. I burned through probably $4,000, maybe $8,000 in federal aid and my dad phoned and says, "Have you seen the check?" I said, "No sir, I didn't, I didn't get a grain or anything." And then finally hit me, I said, "Well, I did get a refund for some books I turned in in a, in a class that I had dropped." And he said, "That's your tuition." So I, and so while I was sitting in the wattle house, he says, "Well, I'm from Hartsville. My daughter's going here." And she says, "Oh, do you know that bitch?" True story. Big tip, yeah, big tip. That lasted one year, can you see? Oh, what a great school. Okay. Alright, um, next, we'll move into our proclamations. So Andy and Kristen are here. I felt like y'all were just here. What, I felt like y'all were here like a couple meetings ago. It's good to see you again. This is, um, this is one of the toughest proclamations to say, and I've gotten so good at it over the years, I think. So, good to see you.
Hi.
So, um, this is in recognition of congenital diaphragmatic hernia awareness fit. And I thought every year we let you guys talk a little bit about it, introduce our honorary and, hey? And I'm gonna give you this. You wanna tell everybody about?
Um, so I was, now Andrew Dan, here, I'm a resident, born and raised in Hartsville. It's my wife Kristen, she moved to Hartsville on May 3rd. And our niece, Alasia, he was, uh, we blessed with him, he was born in October of last year. Um, our journey with congenital diaphragmatic hernia started with our daughter, Cagan Noel. She was born October 28th, 2014, and passed away November 15th, 2014. We had two and a half months for weeks at U.S.C., and Mickey the whole time. Uh, she was diagnosed around 21 weeks. We were sent to a high-risk pediatric and OB, and we were told about 32 weeks, you're gonna see a heart doctor. We had seen the heart doctor, he said, "Everything's fine, we'll fix the hernia." With God's grace, she had been to come home. She was born, they had two major heart conditions that we were not aware of. She was placed on ECMO machine four hours after she was born, roughly. And the ECMO machine basically replaces the heart lungs, does all the work for the body so the body can rest. She stayed on it a couple days, they done the hernia repair, she done fine with it, but she could never get over her heart condition and was not able to come off the machine and went on her own. This is kind of a rare thing, but it's getting more common unfortunately. It's almost now it's at about one in every 10,000 births have congenital diaphragmatic hernia. And all it is, is basically your diaphragm doesn't form all the way and it allows the internal organs to come up. In her case, she had a crushed left lung, so she was probably be able to use that one lung, she never regained the function of that other lung. So since 2015, we've been doing the proclamation and we do it every year if we can, until we can't do it no more, we'll try to talk about as much as we can and, you know, just get the information out there and, and, um, just, again, with different fundraisers and trying to raise funds so if one day we can find a cure for this and help out other children also.
And just raise awareness, probably the next one.
Messy, messy.
One in 2,500 long births. So this is to honor your day and thank you for coming back. It's always good to see you.
Appreciate it.
Think we should just do this twice a year, it's always good to see you. So we'll get, give this to both of you. Y'all smile, her, she'll...
Thanks so much.
Good to see you.
Appreciate it.
Where's our other day? Thanks y'all for coming.
Thank you.
So two more, uh, two more proclamation, no, three more. Johnny hooked me on the clock, so he's, he picked an easy win. Child abuse prevention month, we have anyone? Oh, yes. Oh, we also have, y'all come on up. So Charlotte has brought every, well, not everyone, but we'll probably get you all some, ribbons to wear for awareness. And did you wanna take just a moment to talk about what, go ahead, PD Coalition and...
So PD Coalition, we're now a charity organization that is dedicated to the reduction of sexual assault, child abuse prevention, and family violence. My name is Charlotte again, and I am the volunteer coordinator for Dorlinton County. Last year, we, we helped 10 sexual assault victims and 273 child abuse victims. So this is our month that is nationally recognized to bring awareness to these two violent crimes.
So 20,000 kids, in 2018, the state of South Carolina was in investigations dealing with that.
Right, 273 in Dorlinton.
Yeah, so it affects a lot of people. So, um, thank you for coming and bringing awareness. Do you have extra ribbons? No.
We do have extra ribbons and we also have flyers or inserts for church bulletins. If you're interested in that, please...
So if you wanna grab some, grab some, I bet the Girl Scouts will help you pass them along. Thank you, this is for you. Oh, this is, um, this is declaring the entire month of April as child abuse prevention month, so this is for y'all. Did you, oh, she's gonna film. You're not gonna come get the pictures?
(Inaudible).
Alright, thank you, nice to see you, appreciate you coming.
I, I have to give Charlotte a shout out, she's been working hard the last month with Detective Chamberlain in the speaking class.
Yes.
Charlotte was in with some other members of the PD Coalition, so probably would excellent, we appreciate all the work that you do.
Thank you.
And do we have anyone here for the sexual assault awareness month? You get enough?
We're in the book house today.
I'll give you the floor of the evening.
Again, Dorlinton County, we helped over 10 victims of sexual assault, so very needed service that we're providing here in the county and in Hartsville and throughout seven counties in PD area. We just appreciate anyone passing along the word because this is something that people need our services for.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
So last is fair housing month. Will you hear of the housing month?
Shannon.
Will?
Shannon.
Our Shannon?
(Inaudible).
Shannon? Did you not, did you not know that you were here? So this is to proclaim April 2019 as Fair Housing Month, and I'll just turn the floor to Shannon, if you wanna give us a 10-minute presentation.
So Fair Housing Month is, um, it's recognized nationally. It's from the Housing and Urban Development to promote fair housing initiatives. So the state of South Carolina, South Carolina Department of Commerce, plug funds roll through them, so we, we support them in fair housing endeavors. So it just basically says, "The city of Hartsville promotes fair housing."
Do any of the Girl Scouts wanna ask Shannon the question?
Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon. Gotta call it, dig your Facebook account during a meeting, Ms. Teresa. Alright, um, uh, next, we have the preserving our places in history award for Hartsville's African-American cemetery, Madam Manager?
Counselor.
Councilmember damage, former, former freshman, Councilmember damage.
Former freshman, I'm not the youngest anymore.
Well, technically you're still...
Maybe just a little bit. This was an award that was an absolute honor to receive and by no means could I take any of the credit at all. Ms. Adeline Graham, my predecessor started this project in the mid-'90s and with John, Councilman Andrews' help, have been able to work to a place of getting an historic African-American cemetery adopted from the city. Um, that's pretty much all we can do, so the city is still, or the cemetery is still abandoned, but the city has adopted and maintains it. Over the last year of 2018, we went out every second Saturday and have continued to revitalize the African-American cemetery where there's over 580 people of color buried out there, and that's the first place in the city that African-Americans could be buried. So there's 40 people that were born slaves, 40 people that were war veterans, and a lot of mothers, um, grandmothers, cousins, sisters, we've got some committee members here. So we were recognized for our work and, and project by the African-American Heritage Foundation, it's run by Jenny Harriet, who couldn't be here today. With a phenomenal bit, Felicia Rashad joined us, if you guys remember, she is, that's the mother from The Cosby Show, and that, that was, she graced everybody's presence there. Her mother is actually from South Carolina, and she won the Trailblazer Award. After the ceremony, actually, I went to say hello to her mother and she gave me the address to her home and told me to come. That was before somebody else made me get back here and got a lot of... She was 95 years old, 95 years old, just fried spring chicken, uh, out there, really, really nice, dressed real young and had some Nike Air Maxes on. She was looking good. So it was, it was a privilege to be there. We have several members of our committee, uh, committee, committee that came out to join us, represented a lot of things that are being done around the state for a small city like us to be recognized for a state award like this means a whole lot to us. So, um, thanks to the African-American Cemetery Committee and all that you guys are doing and have done to restore Black history in Hartsville.
Um, there's a couple famous people out there, too.
A.T.H. Butler, is buried out there, the, um, first black doctor in the city, is buried out there. You know, um, Henry Poole, there's Poole Street right outside, behind Fifth Street Cleaners, he's buried out there. There's a Merkin Town that we found, who, in the 1870s, 1880s, he was about 26 years old, owned four or five different businesses around the county. Um, there's a whole lot of history. We encourage the American Legion, it's been out, different beta clubs from the area, F-3, Cobra College, NAACP, a lot of people have come out to really support us and help us out, we're always looking for more people to help. So we go out every second Sunday from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., this, second Saturday, second Saturday, 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. This Saturday's actually gonna be different, we're going out at 1:00 to 3:00. So it's a way to help anybody that needs community service hours. You guys are welcome to come out and join us and just learn some history, it's a good history project, social service project as well, so, thank you.
I'll add to that list.
And we do accept donations, if you go on the cemetery, or if you type in Mayor Avenue Cemetery or Hartsville African-American Cemetery, there is a place to leave donations. We have raised about $5,000 to this point, and we're looking at how we can actually make an entrance for that cemetery. So there's conversation right now, but we will need some funding for that.
I'll add to that list, Thomas Hart usually sends our papers out before we did the major cleanup, we know the cemetery, and, uh, and sheriff's office would send out their crews to help clean up so the city didn't have to. I did not realize that we have a special guest in the audience today, so I'd ask if Mr. Albert Davis III, our local representative for District City, so he represents the city of Hartsville, Councilman Davis, you'd come down, we'd like to have a picture with you in front of the city of Hartsville seal because you may be the first councilman that has visited us this year, and we are glad to have you on, sir. Let's get him around the ball. We're always delighted to have our county delegation here to see what's going on in the city, so thanks for coming. Truth be told, he came from Pre-Water Park, Massachusetts. Anything you care to say, sir?
Good evening, hope everybody's doing well. I didn't, didn't want the mail to start with me, but thank you.
Thank you for coming.
You're safe, you're good.
Okay, um, okay. Uh, next, uh, we have stormwater issues, Mrs. Edith Byrd's here. Ms. Byrd, will you come down? You'll come have a, a seat. Ms. Byrd is at 626 South Sixth Street, here to talk about stormwater. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Byrd?
Yes.
Welcome.
Thank y'all.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I have presented this problem over the years, I've been here since 1990, and I've had this, um, the problem with the water getting in front of my house, getting in my house and it starts overflowing in my yard, it's washed down off, washed out all the sand in the yard, that, that which, uh, the sidewalk, get my, I washed that up, and now the, the streets, the street, the sidewalk and something, they go in front of the house, all the sand has washed up, and it's causing people to fumble as they go to their cars, I want to park on the street. And y'all have addressed, y'all have addressed me, came out there and put sand, put rocks in front of the, um, sidewalk, so the water will wash that over. And also, every three or four years, four or three years, the water department come out there and they have to cover the, the water here that's in front of my house, right at the sidewalk, the dirt washes over that too, the dirt, dirt comes around that, people that stumble over that, the, the water department comes over out there and will and put sand back around it, but you come see now, it's still about that high from under the sand, where it might be stumbling over that too. Now, y'all took me to go to, the, last time I, you know, it's about three years ago, I was told to go to the, not even four years ago, to go to the fire department because y'all have...
Because of the water.
Yeah, the fire department, yeah, because they're, they're in charge of the streets, you know, because the water, the water drainage is on the street, it's not, I mean, the highway part, not the sidewalk. The, I was, the fire department came out there and they told me that it wasn't my problem, uh, they couldn't have because my, my land was lower than anybody else's land, but it's not. My land is on this side of the sidewalk, this side of the street, and, and the water is coming from way up there, there's a drainage up there, probably almost at the Young and Young parking lot on this side, the, the drains isn't there, before they catch the rain, the water, I guess they catch it, but it keep coming on down, and there's a, there's a pit in here where you can see, it starts, it starts to go in, in my yard, before even gets to my house, right there at the corner of the... But the park here, it's going to the park.
So it's flooded from outside the street?
Right there, water starts coming down from in front of the park, it starts coming to my yard, goes across the driveway of the, of the park, it goes down in my yard. And then, on the other end, on, on the other end, when I walk in the barn store, whatever, it starts coming in, it starts coming in there too. And then it's, got my barn floor broken, I had it fixed one time, and, um, and now it's broken up again. That's where the, the sidewalk using high come, I've been trying, y'all can't put some rocks in there, that's the master bedroom. So what I think it needs is another drainage between my house and your, you know, maybe a, a better than front of the park, that might help.
So I'll tell you what we can do, um, give it to the grounds supervisor and, I think partner.
Mr. Ruth?
Yes, the dresser.
Well, they came out yesterday and Friday, they came out to drain it.
Okay, but he'll know...
That's left that, the four houses I stayed in.
Yeah, he'll know...
It's not that, it's not that drain, it's not that, that's the problem. The problem is, there needs to be another drain, I think the four, if it gets to me, they can catch the water, but it come down, but my house curves, and you get inside my house, it start curving, and that curve might be what, what makes it back up too.
So, um, we'll, we'll give that to him because he knows that storm drain system better than us, and, uh, yeah, please, we have all those?
Yeah.
And then, uh, we'll also refer this to DOT, we have a meeting with them on May 2nd, so we'll take these pictures with us to show them the issue at hand.
Yeah, because it's, it's been got my, my barn, my little store, it's lower, I would think one time, but the floor is broken up, the water's coming, 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 it's stuck like in, in my game.
Okay, thank you, ma'am, thank you for coming. You wanna...
Rest assured, any comments you have from what you saw, when you go up there?
We're, we're working on the problem. I mean, we'll work with DOT and see if we can get, you know, resolution to this. There was sand in the stormwater system, it happens from time to time, we did clean it, uh, last week, and it seems to be working a little bit better, but, uh, and you'll just have to work with DOT and see if we can get it.
Okay.
Have you done any jet back in rust?
Sorry?
Have you done any jet back?
Yes, that's actually what we did, uh, Monday morning, we did it last weekend, it was going to be, uh, Monday morning, yesterday.
Have you seen more of that since we had the two hurricanes and all the water, I mean, has that just kept happening?
It's just constant.
Sorry?
I tell you, it's, it's an ongoing issue, it just continues to come in, all the dirt and debris from the road will come into the stormwater system, and we do periodically go through and try to get all the stuff out of it.
I certainly, um, understand your, your pains, Ms. Byrd.
I've been at this problem over and over and over for years, we don't compare that before that guy.
Yeah, and I hope that we're able to find some resolution. Um, my backyard has an open storm drain for my entire street, which is on a hill, so I'm very glad to declare mine a rain garden, look for some federal, federal aid for my house, so I appreciate what you're dealing with there. Uh, alright, so we're gonna move on to management update.
Sure. First, I wanna let the Girl Scouts, um, they're gonna get a little restless soon, so let them come up and make their copy to the council.
You know, if I'd have done the agenda, I would put you in first. That one's asleep.
I know.
Alright, we'll come right back after. Okay, a little bit safer. Come on up, are you coming up?
All the Girl Scouts.
I know, but she's gonna help me, our special assistant city manager slash mayor for the day, alright. So remember last time we came, we promised all of you would get badges, right? Okay, so we've got badges for you. Can you hand out one each person? Sorry that this took so long to get in.
Y'all stay up there. Y'all stay up there.
Alright, so, should everybody get one? No, guys? Okay.
Turn around.
Alright, so you wanna show, show them your, your badge?
Turn around and stand up there and say...
Does everybody see, know what it says?
Heart still.
And it's in the shape of a what?
Heart.
So everybody hold your badge and smile.
Alright, we're smiling.
Say cheer, oh, is everybody's getting it?
(Inaudible).
Smile, you're, just get back.
And thank you, Laura.
Scooch, scooch it up, there, there. Yay!
Alright, on the count of three, say, "We love Hartsville." One, two, three. We love Hartsville!
That's a trick when you count like that. Thank you, girls, for coming.
Thank y'all for having us.
Remember, how many, how many girls run the city?
How many girls run the city? Go remember.
Six out of nine?
Six out of nine. Alright, everybody step up, that's one. Thank you, y'all, thank you.
Thank you all. Tell Thor we said hello.
I'm not. And then we have an introduction, helping out the two of our new city councilors.
Alright, before we get to them, I wanted to recognize Ms. Harriet, uh, who is here. Would you, would you stand so we can congratulate you on a wonderful award and all that you've done to help with the cemetery?
Miss Harriet, I believe you brought another award with you, was that the Palm Medal, um, award that you received as well last week?
Yes, I did.
Oh, wonderful.
Can you tell us about that for us?
Sure, but I'd like to present this to the mayor, and again, since you all were not in Columbia, so mayor, would you come down here?
Okay, well, I want, you guys all come.
Yeah, and members of the cemetery committee?
Yeah, please, please.
Nicole, you just stepped out.
Yeah, she did. Want to see, is she still here?
Yeah, she may be in the ladies room. She should be back shortly. Let's see if we can find her.
Let me run and see if I can get her real quick.
Welcome, sorry, we're in the, put the cemetery committee in the middle here.
So, we had the self...
So, we had the South Carolina African-American Heritage Commission would celebrate 25 years this week of preserving African-American history and culture in South Carolina. I am pleased, and I had nothing to do with the judging, to announce that the cemetery, Hartsfield, City of Hartsfield, African-American Cemetery Committee received the Organization Award for Best Project for 2018. So. And I also want to say that Darlington County really took the awards home this year because Representative Robert Williams was awarded the Preservation Legislature of the Year and I was honored with the highest civilian honor in the state of South Carolina, the Honor Order of the Palmetto. So, I hope I have enough. I brought gifts for, let's do city council first. Oh, Sherry, you want to have?
Yeah. I've got a bunch of them at home, so I don't need to.
Oh, you brought a bunch?
No, I had my whole family with me, so.
Okay, with the mayor. And, okay.
So congratulations on your order.
Thank you, thank you.
Let's get another round of applause.
And these can go to anybody in the audience who wants one.
Oh.
Did you?
Get one over on you.
Did you take a picture?
I got one over at the.
Oh, great. Okay, perfect. Oh, you, well, they have to have your picture. Oh, yeah.
We have another Hartsvillian that was represented, that Representative Hartfield is really, really well, that's Amisha Green. She had a solo with the Clacklin Concert Choir.
Yeah. She's at Clacklin now?
She's at Clacklin and she's a part of the Clacklin Concert Choir and they performed at our luncheon. I've also included for you all a copy of the program, for the luncheon as well as a copy of the program for the gala, which was held on Friday evening because Sanako was one of the sponsors.
Okay, very good. Alright, wonderful. Thank you again. Congratulations. Items from the city manager?
Yes, Rebecca Abord, I've got an action, two actions. The HR department is actually just a representative of the city and a facilitator for this really, really great program.
Right.
That, a really, come on, let's go. Where Dr. Newman did an extremely great job in stealing Quinetta and putting her in charge of the initiative. So if you'll, real quick, tell everybody.
So the Key Career Program is a new program with the Darlington County School District in which we are working to get our kids' workplace learning experiences before they graduate from high school, especially kids who may or may not know what they're planning to do when they graduate from high school. So Latrice and Rashad are both from Lamar High School and it's funny because I interviewed Latrice and Marlene earlier, is it this week? Anyway, I said, "Is there anything else you want to say, Latrice?" And right on video, she said, "I love Hartsville." And I said, "Oh, my God, I love that you love Hartsville." I'm so grateful. When I met with Rebecca early on, Rebecca Newman had hired me, she said, "Sure, Natalie says it's okay, we'll take kids and we'll find a place for them." And they did. And so, and both of them have done really well. I don't want to steal a thunder from their mentors because I feel like the mentors have had a huge part in the experience these two have had. So I'll turn it over to you all, but keep your doors open. Any of you who have businesses in the community that would be willing to work with students, we'll start again next year.
Is there anything you'd like to say about your experience at the police department?
Nothing, I love it though.
That's fine. What about you, Marlene? Well, how's the experience been so far with Latrice?
It's been really good. She's a quick learner. I love her personality and got a good vibe. She's learning quick and she's like a little sponge.
Awesome. What about you, Rashad?
I like it, it's good.
What do you got to say, Lance?
Rashad is doing real good. He's, I learned a lot about Rashad since he's been working with me. I learned that he likes to go to Buffalo Mileways in Florence, he likes to watch YouTube, he likes music. And I hope Rashad, you know, the experience with downtown, I worked downtown with streets and grounds and take care of beautification downtown. We try to do our best. And I hope Rashad can take something to go on for longer his future when he gets out of high school.
Wow. Downtown is looking really good, by the way.
We try. We got to do all the way good.
Alright, items for the consent agenda will be received without objection and stamped through the board of the council. Moving into unfinished business, Public hearing, final reading of ordinance 4363, prepared for public.
It's to amend the lease to U.S. Cellular for the installation of cellular equipment on the existing water tower.
The percuturing by title of presentation of ordinance 4363, this time the chair will move to open the public hearing. You'd like to be heard on ordinance 4363, if you'll rise, state your name and address from the record, come to the project, please don't make comments in two minutes or less. And hearing that there, keep up the good work. Hearing that there are none, the chair will move to open the public hearing. entertain any motion to adopt. Mr. Mayor, make a motion to pass ordinance 4363, ten seconds. There any discussion? Hearing that none, favor, signify by saying aye, opposed by nay, yes, have it. Moving into new business, item seven on the agenda is Resolution 4-19-01, Resolution authorizing the submission of an application by the City of Hartsfield to apply for a 2019 NRPA Disney Play Spaces grant. Is there a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt?
Say.
Is there any discussion?
When does, when does it due and when would the match happen?
The grant application is due on this Friday, April 12th. The funds do not have to be matched until the project is complete, which for the grant is not until December 31st. And for this grant as well, the match does not have to only be by means of finances. It can also be by services, equipment, any way that we choose to match that, whatever fund, in kind, we were able to do that. So it's not a completely financial grant. And that also gives us the opportunity, it does not have to be matched till the end, so it can go on both or one upcoming business.
Okay, thank you, Sherry.
How much money are we talking about?
The total grant is for $30,000. We may not need the full amount from the business, so I'm not sure if there is fluctuation in the award amount that they're giving. According to the grant, they have, there's 25 $30,000 grants that they have to give out nationwide. I believe that's probably, I began working on the grant to help out Shannon, who's got her plate pool. So I believe that's around the total cost of the line items that I've put into the grant already. So it's for about three or four play spaces that we've been looking at with the community engagement committee. We've identified some locations and some preliminary ideas for what these parks will look like when they're completed.
So I think it may benefit you to put this through Parks Committee, if we're going to be assuming ownership of them at some point. Certainly may not warrant it before the applications go in by Friday, but I think we ought to, we ought to send that to Parks if you get notified of it, just so we can get some buy-in from.
I think our major obstacle at this point, I'll take advantage of this since our county council member is here, because if we don't own the property right now, this is through the Forfeited Land Commission and I know the county is trying to restructure the way that's going to work. They know that we want the property, but we have not been given the property. The grant application said that you have to own the property, so maybe he can check in to see how that process is moving along.
Essentially, I think what the idea is, we'd like to have all of the property in the Forfeited Land Commission that's within the city limits to some degree, because then we can, we can pare it back up, we've talked about this for quite a while, we can pare it back up into taxable properties for neighbors that are having to live beside these blighted properties in some cases, that it's not fair to them and there's nothing being done. The city can't really hold the Forfeited Land Commission accountable to maintain them. So if they would finally relinquish them, we could get them back into the, to the community and productive and looking good again and back on the tax roll.
We have invested a lot of funding into the Forfeited Land Commission properties as far as demolition and clearing them. And we have some neighboring property owners that are beside these properties that have taken upon themselves without being asked to, they have kept these properties clean once they were cleared. And so we're asking for a first right for those property owners to be able to join those properties with theirs that they have donated their time, money, and efforts into, so that their property won't be crime-ridden, pest-infested, snakes, rats, cats, dogs, all kinds of things. So if they would consider that, we greatly appreciate it.
From my understanding, the properties that we've been discussing have already been requested by the, from the commission, but that's where the stop is. They've been requested, but I think everything's on hold right now. So, Councilman Davis.
Alright, any further discussion on the resolution? Hearing that none, favor, signify by saying aye, opposed by nay, yes, have it. Item on the calendar will be received without the objection and stand approved. Anything else for the good of this body, for the City of Hartsfield in particular? Thank you, ma'am.
I'll talk to you about it after the meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Assistant City Manager. We're delighted to have you with us today. Mr. Bear now in the back knows your pain because he's been in that seat before. So, meeting's almost over, you're almost halfway to Chuck E. Cheese. Oh, did I just tell the secret, Alan? Wasn't supposed to say that mom's taking you to Chuck E. Cheese, but she is now. Alright, if there's nothing else for the good of this body, then we stand clear.